We're good to go.
All right, I guess we'll officially open up the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for June 3, 2020. Roll call.
Butkey.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kuhn. Lunskey.
Here.
Maticek.
Here.
Riker.
Here.
Sandy. Wasick.
Yes, here. I got a corn present. Reading an approval of the minutes from the April 1, 2020 meeting. I guess if you've looked at those, make comments, motions, adjustments.
Move approval, Alex Riker.
Okay, move by Alex. Second by Mr. Lunskey. Any further discussion, missions? Seeing no one, call for vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved as presented. Public hearings, final approvals, petitions or minor changes, item 31.
Public hearing, appeal to the detailed, sorry, public hearing, appeal to the detailed development plan for the areas to side yard building setback in landscaping requirements for Simonson lumber, 3615 Gateway Drive.
Okay.
All right, this is my item. Brad.
All right, Mrs. Hallford, please continue.
All right, good evening. So the first item on the agenda tonight, we're looking at 3615 Gateway Drive, which sits on a corner lot of Gateway Drive and Stamford Road. As shown on the attachment attached site plan, owners requesting to reduce the side yard setback from seven feet to one foot as well as eliminating the buffer yard. The reason for this request, so they can build a structure to store lumber, the structure will provide an excellent buffer between the adjacent property. Staff has been working with engineering on the review as well as a few other departments. And staff is recommending approval. If you do have any questions, we also have the applicant here to answer questions as well.
Okay, so we also do have a public hearing on this one. I guess I'll bring it out to commission. Anyone have any questions for the tallford on this one?
I have one question.
Please.
Yes, isn't one foot kind of small?
It is, it's reducing it from the the normal seven feet to one foot. But that's what they're requesting to make what they want to do there work.
Have you contacted the neighboring businesses or whatever's next door?
Yep, a notice went out and we didn't get any comments back. As well as we've been looking at the stormwater, how that building would affect adjacent properties and the applicant has already agreed with putting in gutters. So it's along the west side of the property, making sure they have gutters on the structure.
Okay, the other thing, are we setting a precedence here where people can get a smaller setback?
Well, normally we would require some kind of site as like a fence or something like that to put up. So in a way, this is acting like a fence.
Well, my concern is just that down the road that people are going to use this to have a smaller setback. I think our original setback was five feet, is that correct?
Seventy.
Seventy, okay.
Andrea. Is this really kind of like a fence with a small roof on it? Is that how we should be thinking about it?
Yes.
Because it's open on the one side.
Yeah.
And what would our setback be if there was a fence there?
Well, you would still have the same setback and with a buffer yard of five feet.
Okay, and I was just thinking about Menards. You know, they've got, they've got a big lumberyard in the back and they've got a fence that I would assume is somewhat like this. Although I can't remember, I don't think there's a top on it, but they store it right up against the fence.
Right.
But they're set back, aren't they?
Um, I can't recall if they are. But it is something similar, but they're closer to some residential area too. And in this case, their neighboring property is a gas station.
Yeah, and they don't have, like on the north side, they don't have a neighbor. The my only concern here, and tell me how I should think about this, is that there's that vacant lot there. I'm afraid that, you know, it would screw up the marketability of that vacant lot. You know, if if all of a sudden they come in and there's this there's something right there.
Right, I can, I can see that point, but again, there would have been a fence there and this acts like a fence. And working with applicant and they assured us that they're going to do a good job of the design of the building and I think it's going to look really nice.
But the fence would have been seven feet in, right?
Um, no, you can have that on the property line.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that was what my first question was, I was wondering.
Oh, sorry, yes, the fence can go on the property line.
If it had been a fence, they could have put it right on the property line without a variance.
Correct.
And then they can put whatever they want up against the fence once it's built, right?
Um, usually there's a little bit of a space, but yes.
But I mean technically, they could just put it right there. Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me now? I'm sorry, I microphone cut out and headset cut out for a second.
I hear you.
Okay, thank you. Megan was trying to join us, Ms. Andy. Did you get on, Ms. Andy?
I'm on now, yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm welcome. So any further discussion, we're going to open up the public hearing, I guess, at this point. And I would do that and ask Mr. Brooks for his assistance on this or however we're going to do that.
I'm sorry, what was that? Did you want me to stop sharing, make it easier for you to see, right?
Yeah, and then open up any public hearing or we'd like to hear from the owner at this time. If anybody who has any questions for them, they're they're representatives here, correct, Ryan?
They are, we have Rick and I believe Stacy as well, you see on the conference room. They're they're both available. And I will tell you that in terms of public comment, we have not received any from neighboring properties which were mailed notices as well.
Okay. So any anything you want to address, Mr. Simonson or any of the other guests on this matter, I guess, so call this the public hearing?
Did you want me to comment or did anybody have any questions for us?
I guess open it up, the commission.
Yeah, this is Alex Riker. Explain to me why, you know, looking at Frank's concern that, you know, all of a sudden, everybody's going to want to be on the lot line. Why, why should we? What's the reason for this?
The reason we wanted to push it back as far as we could or request that we wanted to push it back is because if you could see aerial photos of our yard now as we're trying to expand and we just hired another salesperson. You know, the the ability to bring in lumber and building materials on the inside of our lot makes our driveways extremely tight. So for safety reasons and to be able to store more of building materials under that building, protecting the building materials and and safety of moving around the the yard. We plan on hiring another salesperson and we're we're just, we are growing, things are going well there. And we we are looking, I mean, we we would definitely, that lot is very appealing to us. And as you can see, we've pulled the building up. You know, about thirty feet from our other building for a driveway to possibly, if the the landowner of the gas stations would be willing to sell that lot, we would be, we'd be interested in purchasing it. So we're just trying to make room for lumber and the safety and ability to move around that yard better.
All right, thank you.
What is the setback from the pavement to the lot line right now?
Ten feet.
Okay. And right now you're storing all the material right on the edge of that concrete?
Correct.
And you're basically requesting a fence with a little bit of a little bit of small roof? That's what we've kind of determined here?
That is correct.
Are you going to pave up to the lot line or up to the new structure, the fence, the building?
Yes, that's what we plan on doing.
No, Mr. Simonson, this was one that the just help me with my memory, the back lot did get paved, correct, on this one?
Yes.
This is one that, yeah, we held the ground and I guess he paved all that and got all that done according to what we wanted, the city wanted, I should say.
That is correct, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question.
Please.
Since we're one foot off the property line, is that correct with the fence? Is there a reason why the other property owner won't allow the fence on the property line?
We picked one foot just to be off the property line some. We did survey the land, so we know where the the stakes are. And we picked one foot just to to kind of keep it off the property line some.
But you didn't talk to the other owner about having it on the property line?
No, we didn't ask, we didn't talk to him about that. We have good relations with him though, and I don't think there that he would have an issue with that.
Well, I I know everything you guys do is really good. You do a good job. It's a nice lumberyard. Everything's good there. I still have a problem with this one foot and I may vote against it just because of that. I'm I'm worried about everybody in the city saying, well, hey, wait a minute, these guys got a one foot setback. I need one now. And so I just have a problem with that, but I'll leave it at that.
Steve, I have a comment.
Please, Mr. Budkey, please.
Um, so in the packet there, it makes reference to a buffer yard requirement as well. So I suppose this is a question really for staff, like with a one foot setback, I mean, what what's the point of of the buffer yard? The buffer yard is essentially being waived. That's that's part of the request here, but like, why, why have it in the first place if we're just willing to ignore it here?
Um, originally, I mean, you you would have it there. But since they requesting the smaller setback, then it kind of goes hand in hand.
Okay, so maybe just zooming out a bit, then like just generally, a buffer yard is required on properties of this use type for why, like, what's the philosophy behind it, I guess?
It's usually anywhere from either stormwater or screening for adjacent properties.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, so are they actually asking for like a thirteen and a or twelve and a half foot waiver or a seven foot? The fence, if they built a fence, it could go at one foot?
The the fence could go on the the property line.
Typically, what staff would do is if they put up a fence, you know, normal buffer yard between two like uses in this case would be one side would do a half a and the other side would do a half a for a total of ten feet. And within that, you're looking at six trees every hundred lineal feet. If somebody had asked for a fence, typically we say, okay, that's going to wipe out, nobody'd see the because we'd always require that fence to be on the property then closest to that neighbor they're trying to screen. And nobody'd see those trees or the shrubs or, you know, in the same way, so a lot of times we'll waive that depending on, and usually it's we never know whether two neighbors are getting along necessarily, so you end up with these buffers there. I think in this case, what Mr. Simonson is kind of saying is I think this neighbor, obviously, they haven't built on that that back lot, but you know, we're kind of looking at similar uses, they're looking to put up a fence. That's goes to a higher level actually of screening than we normally ask for other than that that strip, that setback amount, which we call it a setback and and you're kind of looking at that as a setback, Alex, where you're adding those, the building setback and the landscape area, but those are really one in the same. So within this, what would have been a seven foot building setback, five of it would have been the required buffer buffer yard on that side.
Ryan, should I be looking, I'm I'm looking at Google Earth and looking at the Menards yard. And they have a a berm, a sidewalk, and then a setback. I imagine that's got to be quite a little distance. Should I be thinking about that differently because it's adjacent to a road instead of another property?
You're on mute, Ryan.
Thanks, Stephanie. So this is kind of so everybody can see what you're talking about. This is that back area. And this is a ten foot area, so they're ten foot off of what what would have been similar to what they're looking to do. But this one, to me, is a little bit different because everybody's seeing this area. So this is public right of way here on 30th. This is public area here on on South 38th Street. So we wanted to see this area kind of another another area. We didn't want that right up against the sidewalk. And what Simonsons is doing here is right next to a neighbor neighboring property. So this, although Menards is similar in use, the whole feel is a little bit different, but it's similar what they're looking to do. We're just allowing it to go a little bit closer because it's a neighboring property as opposed to on the public right of way.
Well, and that's and that's what I was saying. I mean, I think to think about it that way, it seems quite a bit different to have it abutting a road as opposed to abutting a neighboring property. My, I guess my only concern is we don't know what's going to go in that empty lot. And I don't want to screw up what's going to go in that. You know, I don't want to diminish the value of this next door neighbor with who has an empty lot.
Yeah, and the the neighbor might find find value in the fact that it's already screened from a a lumberyard next door as well. So in this case, he was notified. I haven't talked to him personally, but you know, it was available. He's aware of what's going on.
Mr. Simonson, have you spoken with the gentleman that owns that vacant lot or is that the same person who owns the Senex?
It is the same, I believe it's the same person. Stacy, do you know for sure or Nate?
I don't know for sure. I think it's Bob, but you know me. Yeah, we're assuming that Bob will be the one that for sure.
I can look it up real quick. I think that's his who, he was the last owner that I was aware of. Yeah, he's still, he's still the owner.
I'm sorry, who is Ryan?
Uh, the same guy who owns the the gas station.
All right, all right. Well, I feel comfortable with this, thanks.
I was going to say different ends of town, different different layouts. I I like what they've done with it. I was skeptical of a lumberyard there at first years ago. But I like what they've done with it. I like the concessions they made on the pavement. Looks really good around there.
Yeah, it does.
Um, so I'm gonna I guess, I guess I'll close the public hearing unless anybody's got any other questions for Mr. Simonson or any of the other people that are on. Seeing, oh, Mr. Riker.
Oh, I was going to let you close it and then I move approval.
Closed and accepted, moved by Mr. Riker.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it very much.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Miss Mr. Lunskey, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, I will call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye, Frank.
Andrew.
Okay, I got, I got, can we read that back? I got Mr. Budkey opposed. Could I call for a vote? Roll 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 call vote, sorry. Um. Mr. Budkey?
Uh, no.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Lunskey?
Yes.
Mr. Maticek?
No.
Mr. Iker?
Yes.
Ms. Sandy?
Yes.
And Mr. Wasick is a yes. Okay, motions approved.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, um, moving on to item three, two.
Hearing fast track replat of areas within Perkins First Edition located at 2751 and 2925 32nd Avenue South.
All right, this one's going to be mine. So if you guys remember a few, maybe now a couple of months ago, we recently platted the old Pizza Hut or current Pizza Hut is going to be a new discount tire store. And then we also in a separate replat replatted TJ Maxx to be on its own separate lot. Those two being within the same subdivision caused some legal description ramifications as to who was going to record first. Both being different corporations, they had their own timelines and legal terms, so one had to be recorded before the other, otherwise it would negatively impact one and it it got really messy, long story short. So they are combining the two into one so that regardless of what corporation is ready first, the plot will be recorded and everything will be smooth sailing. So it's more of a cleanup on logistics side of things than anything new coming in terms of property line changes or anything like that. So with that, I could answer any questions. Or maybe there aren't any.
Steve, you're muted.
Steve, you're still on mute, sorry.
Did we lose Steve?
Nope.
The vice president will open the public meeting.
Thank you. Thanks, Alex. Had a had a microphone issue. Any anyone in the audience or anyone on virtual world would like to address this item, please do so at this time. Ryan, do you have anybody?
No, we don't have any.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
At a check, move approval.
Second.
All right, I got Mr. Maticek moving approval and I got All right, I got Mr. Maticek moving approval, and I got Mr. Johnson as a second, if that's what I kind of heard. Um, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, three, two passes, three, three.
Public hearing Fast Track replat of Business Park Third Re subdivision, lot B, lot two. Located at twenty seven fifty five South Forty Eighth Street.
This one's mine again, and this one is a replat for the sale of the property to go to Midcontinent for a a technical facility. Pretty straightforward, but I can answer any questions.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Ms. Ederson before I open the public hearing? Um, seeing no hands, we'll open the public hearing, um, again, is there anybody waiting?
Nope, not that we're aware of.
Okay, um, with that, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission, Mr. Eckert.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Eckert.
I'll I'll second Maticek, but I have a quick question.
Okay, Mr. Maticek will second, and go ahead.
Uh, Brad, is Brad there?
Oh, you got Andrea, sorry.
Oh, okay, I was just concerned about when we did the uh restructuring of our uh different zones and stuff. Uh, this does uh. Complement the business park part that we put in that, is that correct?
Yep, currently, the, if you, as Frank mentioned, we, this area, the city's business park has. It's almost like a cleaner industrial is kind of an easy way to describe it. Um, it's it's intended to be an industrial park, but we have certain specifications on building materials required. Um, landscaping, things like that, so um it does meet it, and they will. The zoning's already in place for that, so we'll administratively go through all of those requirements as the site plan comes through. But the intended use does fit with that PUD, um, like Frank mentioned.
Good, and just just refresh my memory, what is the actual zoning code for the business park?
I believe it's just the business park, um, PUD is what we've called it.
Like, a B four?
Um, we tie it.
Before?
We tie it back to the I two with specifications.
Okay, back to I two, all right.
I two uses, yep, it's I two uses, but more um requirements on building materials, much like we've um done our corridor overlay districts.
Okay, that's fine, what's it actually next to?
Uh, and next to in terms of zoning district or?
Oh, well, yeah, or what what bus- what's out there? Is it just this business park, or is there an something industrial, or what's there? I'm not familiar with uh Forty Eighth Street, sorry.
Oh, sure, this is just south of the city's current industrial park, so in between kind of where LM. Windpower probably is the southern end of the current city's industrial park, and then this between LM and Thirty Second Avenue about. Johnson has some farmland there that's right off Thirty Second, that's still to be determined, but. The city has a business park that's this cleaner industrial um feel, and this is one lot in the middle of that industrial park. Acme FedEx, um, Border States Electric now. And I'm sure.
Is it in that same area, or is it across the street?
No, in the same area, it's a little bit south of of FedEx.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Seeing nobody hands up, uh, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Um, motion announced, we passes. Item three, four.
Sign appeal for mural located at three sixteen South Third Street.
Good evening. Um, so, John, am I able to share a screen here? I am, bear with me, I'll pull up the uh. The mural for you guys all to look at. So the the subject mural we have here is uh being brought forward by uh kind of a team of of folks. There we go, you see that all right?
Yes, I see it.
Excellent, um, so we have a a team bringing the this proposal forward of uh Chad Kaya with Kaya Painting and Historical Restoration. As well as in partnership with uh the Ramus Guys Brewery and the Public Arts Commission, they're requesting. Uh, an appeal to to the mural sign code. To install this mural, as you can, you can see here, um, on the, this will be the southern wall of the uh. The Opera House Building downtown currently home to Ramus Guys Brewery. Couple points worth um noting, I guess, with this location in general, you can kind of see on the left side, lower left side of this picture is that there are. Portions of this building's brick that have been painted previously, the reason this is coming forward here is because this particular. Wall has not been, uh, so that portion of it does not currently meet our our mural code as it currently reads, so. In addition to that small portion in the lower left of this picture, there's also a ghost sign, which I attached in the staff report. Which is on the back of this building, so um just as a point of context there. As proposed for this mural, uh, uh, it would include a a protective clear coat. Which would be applied to the brick within the paint to be applied over top of it. Uh, information that that uh Kaya Painting and Historical Restoration has provided shows that, um, you know, the materials to be used are designed for exactly this. Just another point of context is no mirror or no windows would be covered up by the mural. You know, as I mentioned, the reason this is coming forward is because our our current, as our current mural code reads. Um, a mural can't be installed on the original unpainted brick of a historic building. Um, which which this is, it had been previously, you can kind of see the outline been covered up by a building that was once there, no longer the case, obviously. So we are here before you today with an appeal to to allow this mural to proceed. Um, another point of context is that this this was brought to the downtime design review board as an information item, uh, to make them aware of the request. Uh, you know, as it says in your staff report, the the uh, there are some members of the commission, particularly those representing the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, that had some concerns about the preservation of the brick. Um, and and what damage, you know, applying this clear coat and and mural paint over top could possibly have. Um, so there was some concern there, uh, you know, I guess far be it for me to be a an expert on on paint materials and stuff like that, we do have Chad Kaya here. Uh, who can, who can comment a little bit about um kind of the project, the the materials specifically that that they're proposing here. Uh, and and what they're they're looking to do here today, so chat if you wanna, I'll stop sharing here and.
Hey. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Kaya.
So, um, just to give you a little background, I've been doing painting in Grand Forks for uh twenty six years, my twenty six year of business. And we uh. Uh, a lot of the work that we do are on historical buildings, um, one of the projects I had, and I think Steve Wasick remembers this, uh, prior to the flood in ninety six. Um, the toasted frog building, which was Lola's at the time. That building was previously painted pink and green, if anybody remembers that. And I was a part of the team that sandblasted that brick, and it's in perfect shape after the sandblasting. And even now, there are more, there there are techniques that are, that the technology's expanded so much that. With their sandless blasting, where down to thirty PSI, where you could even put your hand in front of it and it wouldn't damage your hand. It would get rid of whatever you wanted to get rid of, but the brick. And the um, and more importantly, the grout, a lot of people don't re-. You know, you think about the brick, but the grout is just as important as the brick to maintain its integrity. So, and the and another thing too, we've restored a lot of foundations and brick. Uh, chimneys in the Reeves Drive, uh Belmont area, a lot of those are getting to be crumbly. And we apply this product that we plan on applying to this building. To those to help shore them up, to help preserve them, to give them many more years of life. A lot of that brick, and similarly to the brick that's on the side of this building, was quarried between thirteenth and seventeenth on Belmont. If you notice, if you drive on thirteenth, it dips down to seventeenth, a lot of that brick was quarried there. So I've dealt with this problem for a long time. As far as preserving brick. Uh, the product that we are deploy, it it's a clear, uh, it's sheenless, so it's pretty much a matte sheen. You wouldn't notice it on just a bare brick. So we do that a lot of times too, just to preserve the brick without putting something on top of that. Now, so that that would also be a barrier between the brick and the paint that we plan on putting on. Um, I don't know if that gives you a technical background on. Um, you know, the concern is that the historical people have.
But you know, Mr. Eckert, please.
Yeah, Chad, so. Does this clear coat make it easier to take the paint off?
Yes.
And I I mean. If I knew that you were gonna be there to take it off forty years from now, um, I wouldn't have as many concerns.
Um, well, I've maintained Matt's buildings, uh, the the Rambus Pizza. Building uh for the last, I don't know, thirty years, I guess, since Kim Holmes is Adam. So I make sure that all the buildings that I've worked on have been ma- maintained. And yeah, I hopefully I'll be alive then to. Doing you.
You'll you'll be all alone, Chad, you'll be all alone. Um, just, no.
My concern is, you know, that this that this can be removed, uh, you know, it's gonna be. Hopefully thirty, forty years before anybody talks about removing it, and it'll, you know, when it starts to deteriorate, when we're all along gone. Um, but you're saying at that point, it will be easy to take off, I mean, because. Our concern is it goes to hell, and it looks terrible. And the new owner says, well, I can't take it off, it's, you know, it's on there, I'm not worried about you and Matt, I'm worried.
Yeah. You know. Well, that, with the background I gave on the um, on the sandblasting with paint. And now there's sandless blasting, so I I I'm guessing in forty years, it's gonna, the the technology's even gonna be exponential as far as removing. Um, deteriorating substrate.
And I think what. Go ahead.
It would be a significant cost to take it off, though, wouldn't it?
Um, I would guess to stand blast a building like that would be. Two to five thousand dollars.
Oh, okay, okay.
When we did, we did the entire building of the tour at the. Um, I'm sorry, the Lola's building in conjunction with um Melby Construction. Um, in ninety five, ninety six it was, and that. It was, it's sanding, uh, sand blasting's a little messy, but it's exterior, you're dealing with sand. But now they have, like I said, the sandless blasting. Which is essentially a bit of bit of water, and uh you lay out some tarps, drops down, roll up the tarps and. And away it goes, it it's done all the time in uh Minneapolis, um, in Winnipeg. For example, so Winnipeg is, they call that the city of murals, there's between five hundred and a thousand murals in Winnipeg. And the the reason why that there are so many murals is that they're dealing with the same problem with the deteriorating brick on the sides of buildings. You never see murals on front, you know, the storefronts of buildings, u- usually on the sides or the rear. And they originally started doing that to preserve the brick.
So Chad, going forward, I mean. What you're telling me is if we use this product. Cause our big concern all along, and that's why we had the the removable. You're saying with this product that we. It would make sense to change our our code completely to to allow murals on any brick as long as they put this primer on first.
So I could probably jump in a little there and just say is a little context of of. What how we arrived at the miracle that we currently had, that was um. Largely to address uh the preservation of of historic untouched brick, that sort of thing. Um, the reason staff is bringing.
That's the only reason we passed it, Mr. Coleman. Is because we were not gonna put it on the historical type of buildings, that's where we were, we were very adamant about it, that I. I I mean, and no offense, Mr. Kai or Mr. Winjam, we, I mean, we went through long exhausting. Debates on this subject and, you know, just being careful with all the questions that Mr. Eckert had on this. And that's, it surprised me coming back, which I understand some of the reasons. But i- it just kind of surprised me that that, you know, here we are, not even a year after we. Gently approve this, um, you're back jumping in.
Sure, it I, yeah, totally understand, the the reason that that, um, you know. Staff is bringing it forward with the recommendation to approve is because the context at that time was exactly what you guys were saying is to. And what historic preservation folks had mentioned is to ensure the preservation of the brick, we didn't want the. The mural to be the cause of of the deterioration um of of that historic brick. Based on conversations with Mr. Mr. Kai and his experience, you know, uh, over three decades of experience doing exactly this. Uh, particularly with this kind of brick. Um, you know, he mentioned along the Reeves Drive and and then, you know, the. Forget the the toasted frog building downtown, um, you know, experience with applying this brick. And knowledge of working with it and and his assurances that this will in fact protect and preserve the brick. Arguably better than just allowing it to to stand as is. Um, which is, I believe, why he, why he applies it along those homes along um Reeves at Reeves Drive is to um. Preserve the the brick, that historic brick, um, rather than just leave it bare and as is, so. I guess that's a long way of saying the reason we're bringing it forward is actually because we feel like he he is addressing. The reason, the the motivation behind having that in there, and that he is um. Bringing forward a product and a process that will preserve the brick, uh, as opposed to damage it or cause it to deteriorate over time.
And if I could add to that, we had long discussions at the staff level on on this as well, and. At the time, Andy going through all the the hoops and of the mural code. Uh, maybe we didn't do enough due diligence on our part to ask local painters if there was a product that would maintain it. Um, when we wrote that code to protect the historic brick, that was our generic staff understanding that generally. Paint does end up destroying and deteriorating brick, it doesn't let it breathe, it 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 ends up deteriorating is our. What our common knowledge of that was at the time, however, with um Mr. Kai's application, um, that. He's a professional, he's given us the specs and and all these different things that come with protecting that that we didn't know about before.
Nobody's questioned, I mean, if there's, if there's two guys that wanna call one for an idea, it's gonna be Mr. Winjam, and one to paint somebody, it's gonna be Mr. Kaya. Uh, there's no question on that at all, it it's it's more the question, are we gonna? Open this up then, and it was more than just. Painting over the brick, it was what what gets painted, what's on there, the the look of the whole area, and if everybody on the commission's fine with it, I'm just bringing up the points. That we, so we don't have to hash this out for eighteen hours.
Yeah, so that's the other piece of this is that the um, so the the mural does meet all other portions of code in terms of. Um, you know, are the amount in terms of what we're able to weigh in on on. I'll say that the content or nature of the mural is whether or not it falls under commercial sign code or is offensive or obscene. Which this objectively isn't. So beyond that, the it meets all other portions of the code other than this one section. You know, I I guess to Andrew's point is that we probably could have done and should have done more due diligence on the front end of the mural code, writing it in the first place to account for. Certain things like this, um, but another.
Kind of what I said a year ago.
Well, another reason for that, um, the provision to bring it forward to that, if someone did wanna paint on a historic building was. That there would be an appeal process available to them for. So those projects could receive an added level of scrutiny, which is is why we're here.
Right, okay, anybody else got any comments to make or any questions or any?
I've just got one small one, um, is that. It it's perfectly fine to paint on brick, according to city law, but it just when it pertains to a mural is when it is an issue. Which I thought was interesting.
I I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Kai, it it's it was just a long exhausting, I think a lot of work could have been put into this. Last year when we went through this, and it would made it easier for all you guys trying to do this, it was my whole point to it, but um, regardless, um. Uh, just any other, any other comments from the committee, I'd like to hear somebody else's voice of reason if we could, if anybody's got one.
Yeah, Steve.
Yeah.
Yeah, I always have an opinion, um, I like it, I like it, I think it's a a nice, uh. I I think it's an appropriate mural for North Dakota, I think it's exciting if someone else wants to put their own money into public art. And of course, you know, art to everyone is is something different, but. When the building owner wants to do it, we know that it's not gonna hurt the brick, they've put a, I think they've been working on this for about a year. Um, I'm I'm fully supportive of this and and uh, I I think it's great because now I feel much more confident about this if there is some sort of a. Whatever this is that you're putting behind the murals, so that that we know that not only can this be removed, but. Perhaps we're, it's a benefit to the building besides. So, um, I'm pretty excited about this, I hope more people. Do things like this, not not only downtown, but or but around Grand Forks, um. You know, it's always fun to see it in other towns, and so I hate to stand in the way of. Bringing it to our own city, so. I i- if it's appropriate at this time, I don't know where we are at this, I'd I'd move approval.
Okay, I think it's uh very appropriate, Ms. Sandy, um, there is no public hearing, um, so.
I'll second, this is Andrew.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Bud. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Budkey. Moved by Ms. Sandy, seconded by Mr. Budkey. Any further discussions?
Just one, one thing is, is it, is the image digitized like that going to be how the mural looks? Or is it just the way it came out in the packet?
Mr. Wenjam, you had your hand up, kind of?
I'll answer that question. It is a bit digitized. It's not quite as digitized it is in the image that you received. It's kind of a take on a pointillist piece. I don't know if you're familiar with the artist George Serratt. But with pointillism, the closer you are to the object, the more distorted it is. And the further away you are from the object, the clearer it is. So we thought that would be appropriate from people traveling on South Third Street toward the image to have quite the impact. You can see the image from quite a far away, almost to Minnesota Avenue. You, you know, you can get a clear viewing of it. So it's a, it's a juxtaposition between modern art and a classic image of, you know, a farm scape or a, you know, landscape.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion? If not, don't see anybody waving.
Just, I just like to add, I, I think this is, this is going to be a great addition. I'm really fond of this building. I used to live here for a couple of years. So I, I'm really happy that we've found a solution here that's, that's tasteful and, and sort of speaks to the, to the current function of the, of the main level. I'm also really glad that we're talking about, you know, a, a product and a method that isn't, you know, a fixed plywood, which I've, I've always thought from, from the very start was very problematic. And I, I think that if we're talking about, you know, remove, the removability and like being, being able to essentially reverse this in the future, this method strikes me as much, much safer, much more reversible, just all around better than, than a fixed plywood, which, which I think would probably destroy the wall. So that's all I have.
Okay. And, and we, part of it is, is, you know, portion a little bit, but we are getting what we wanted. We just got to be careful with this because we are getting a professional that knows what he's doing to paint it. That was one of our other fears, so I just want to reiterate that. We had a lot of fears out there about this. But I do recommend before I call for a vote that we somehow look at this code. And I think, Andy, you could do some due diligence on this. So with that, I will call for a vote. All those in favor.
I have a quick question if I can.
Who's that?
This Frank. I have a quick.
Oh, sorry, Frank. Please, please.
Well, just if, if you wanted to put up a canvas mural, let's say, you know, one that was on the canvas, you know what I'm talking about, and put it on a brick building, would, would we require them to coat the area behind that as well?
If you, if you just want, if you wanted to presumably like bolt or attach the canvas and hang it on the side of the building, no, you, we wouldn't require a clear coat or any protective measures behind that. It would just be bolted into the, into the mortar presumably, and that would be it.
Do, do we have any restrictions on that? I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about political signs and some stuff like that that might crop up.
So I don't think we have restriction. So we would run it through the, for like a permanent sign or something like that. That's how the current code reads would be, you know, whether it's canvas or plywood for a, a non-commercial mural sign. If it were to be hung up for an extended period of time, it would come through the, our approval process and on the application or part of the application process would be our zoning administrator, Bev Collings, would take a look at it and make sure that it's, it's safely attached. So that level of review would be applied, but we don't have any provisions beyond that other than that it has to be attached safely. Political signs, I think, fall into a separate area of code. You know, it's, it's kind of a, a different gray area. So this particular portion of, of code, the mural, non-commercial signage piece wouldn't apply to that.
Okay. The reason I bring it up is, is some time ago, United Hospital wanted a big canvas mural on the front of the hospital to promote something. And it went through us and we went ahead and, and allowed them to do that. And I guess I'm just concerned if we need to have a, a procedure for that. I'm not worried about what these guys are going to do with this. I think it's great, but I'm worried about what other kind of things can show up.
Right.
That a little bit because I think what Frank's is referring to is, at least from what I can remember, Altrude came forward maybe last year with the, a very large banner sign that indicated the new hospital that they were starting to commence. And that came through as a sign appeal similar to this request, and then it was a sign appeal, but different part of code because it had to do with Altrude's branding, their actual signage, which comes with total square footage allowed and total size requirements. And so that one fell under a different commercial signage piece, whereas murals are not supposed to have a commercial element to them, and so they're treated separately.
I just have a quick comment. If, if now that we know that there is the technology to do this in a safer way, I think it would be important, and I think, you know, this is what Frank was mentioning, but it would be important to look at this sign code again and, and the requirements of some, because I, I think about that. Now I'm thinking about that plywood board and what happens between the brick and the board when there's water and everything else that gets between there. And so I think as we see more of these mural requests coming forward, it would be best if we knew what the latest technology is. And, and it may be that we have to change that code as the technology changes as well. But perhaps that's something that could be looked at.
And I'd be happy to be a technical advisor for the city too, when it comes to these issues. I'm, I've worked with all kinds of products of brick.
Sounds like we got to volunteer for the science up committee. You're hired. All right. Well, let's move this. Let's, you know, I'll be on it, Chad, so I'll give you a bad time. So all right, I think we're ready for a vote. Mr. Maticek, you got your stuff done? I can't see, so I want to make sure.
Yeah, no, I did. And, and I just, I just wanted to bring it up. I'm, I didn't want to cloud the water on this, this issue, but we've had some other issues and there's going to be probably some murals going up over the election and stuff. And I just kind of wanted to clear the air on that. And thank you, and I will vote to approve this.
Okay, all right. With that, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign? Okay, motion carries. And I think now you got two, Andy, that want this thing reviewed again. So I think you got some work ahead of you.
Absolutely. Can do that. And I got to volunteer with Chad too, so happy to do that.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Item, communications and preliminary approval to move down that list. Item four-one.
Ordinance to amend zoning map, JR PUD Concept Development Plan Amendment Four, located along Forty-Fourth Avenue South between South Thirty-Fourth Street and South Thirtieth Street.
All right, I'm up. Good evening again. So now we're looking at a handful lots located along Forty-Fourth Avenue South between South Thirtieth Street and South Thirty-Fourth Street. They're highlighted on the plat, as you can see on the attachment in your staff report as well as on the screen. The builders have requested that the impervious lot coverage be increased to fifty percent for this area. This is similar to what we've done recently just to the south. And we're working with engineering department and we'll be requiring the applicant to verify that stormwater system can handle the increased impervious to the additional capacity. So staff is recommending approval for the request, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, preliminary approval. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Hallford as we go here? Preliminary. I don't see anybody waving or raising their hand at me.
Move approval, Maticek.
Mr. Maticek moves approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lunskey. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing no one, call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? All right, four-one passes. Four-two.
Back of queries, eleventh edition and ordinance dedicating right of way located at nine hundred block of David Drive, west of Cherry Street, south of fifty-eighth, Fifty-Eighth Avenue South.
This one's mine, Steve.
Okay, Mr. Brooks.
What we have here is, we're, here's Washington Street here. Hopefully everybody can see my screen. Washington Street and Sixty-Second. There's a small area Thompson Homes is looking to continue the construction that they're doing. They're going to start in this northeast corner, right up in here. You can see the other platted lots that we have in here. And they're bringing in nine lots on the north side of David Drive and nine on the south. I could stop the screen and, and share that plat, but it's, it's just in this area here. So I, I think the Airphoto does the best job. Pretty simple, we, simple plat, and this is a two-meeting deal. So we'll have this meeting and the next one as well. And I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, anybody from the committee have any questions for Mr. Brooks? Mr. Reichert, I saw your hand first.
I was looking at the turnaround that's there and the note on it says that it's going to stay there until the street is extended south. Did that mean extended west? Or is it, is it going to be a corner there and turn south or?
Yeah, it actually turns, it goes, you are correct. It goes west before it drops to the south. The one thing I didn't have is my overall concept plan. Let me perhaps grab that for you here, that it helped. And I'm probably not going to find it that quickly. Let me, let me go back.
So, so there is going to be like a, a turnaround there.
Yeah, it's.
foreseeable future.
Yep. We, we require that, so it's going to be temporary because this lot's only going to come into here. But eventually this road comes down and around and then comes down and, and meets here.
Okay. And do we require that to be paved?
That temporary turnaround would not. It'll just be gravel until they continue to, to build on those lots. The snowplows need that and fire needs that for access.
At some point, I mean, so technically it could stay gravel forever?
Yeah, this is similar to what we did in, just about every new development has this when we, when we come in in portions like this. So this has happened all over and, and we never end up with a, permanently there. Because what happens is, once this area starts feeding this in and actually, I'll follow up, probably the next item's going to answer some of that too with the, with the annexation that this developers, well, they're, they want to get going on more of this area. And we're, we're actually talking about annexing the whole area to kind of keep this whole thing rolling. So they wouldn't want to keep this as gravel because they're not making money on that either.
And then just one other comment. Do we have to have David Drive? Can we not make this a numbered street just from all the people that I talked to that don't like named drives?
I get that. We'll, we'll review that and have an answer for you by the end. I think there was a issue that there's three roads here. This is sixty-first down here, Sixtieth or Sixty-first. I don't think we can do numbered because we didn't have, we wouldn't have enough numbers unless you wanted to say fifty-eight and a half. And that usually we don't have a whole lot of people that like that. So we are using up all the numbers, but we needed a named street in there as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Oz Vic always has a nice ring to it. But Mr. Budkey, did you have your hand up?
I did, yeah. So I guess I had a couple of related questions. The first, obviously, the developer has, has got, you know, plans in mind here, like, as in plans for the homes. Does the city, does the city know what those are? Do, do they know what the, like what the, the value of those homes will be? Not just, I guess specifically the taxable. Well, what I really mean is the taxable valuation. So like what, what is the tax revenue that, that the city can expect for a development like this going forward?
I don't have the tax revenue, but I can tell you that this, this is fairly dense as you can tell by the lot widths as they, as they are brought in. But I do not have what the final tax bill would be for this. And that's, there, there's a lot of variables in on that, on what that would be, but.
Right, absolutely. But, uh, you know, a target in mind, I'm sure. I guess my, the, the second half of that question is what, what is it going to cost the city to install this, this road? And all of the utilities that are associated with the development?
Those get special assessed. So maybe what you're asking about is maintenance rather than.
Exactly.
So, maintenance piece. You know, I, I don't have the math to get down to that. There's certainly been, and I can probably tell that there's burning ears here already because Andrea and Andy have both been working on a potential putting together a project for Smart Growth America to actually get some of those numbers. Because that's where a lot of cities have, have gone into that level of detail. We can certainly do that and we've actually got a bid of, of what that cost would be. So that's, that's a whole nother philosophy question that would, is a little bit bigger than I could probably answer for you in the next even five minutes.
Fair enough. That's, that's good to know, actually. I'm encouraged to hear that city staff are working on answering that question. I, I would encourage that, that, that effort continue. I, I have a concern that, especially with, you know, budgets anticipated being tight for the next fiscal year, that that the city is, is able to meet its obligations in terms of city services. So that's all. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'll, anyone else have anything? I, I guess we're looking for, didn't get a motion or a second on this.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reichert?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. He just came into full screen again so I could see everybody.
Apologize, I missed. Sharing.
No, you did, you're doing great, Ryan. You're doing great. Any further discussion? If not, I will call for a vote. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item four-three.
Uh, this one's, oh, I'll, I'll just jump right to it. This, this one's the annexation. We talked about where that, this is going to look a little bit different, but this is where those eighteen lots came in. And this is kind of that incentive I talked about. So we're looking to annex this whole area. We understand that this developer wants to get going on this area. And we've heard from both Planning Commission and City Council not to do small annexations anymore. So we are looking to bring this whole area in. And one of the reasons we think it, it actually makes a lot of sense, this road's going to continue on down and meet up with Cherry Street here. So we'd get the lots that are even going to be fronting onto that road. Because these lots would continue. And this lot right here is actually a school district lot, which for the most part is almost all completely in already. So that school lot would come in as well. And we would just take this road down here, Sixty-first Avenue. So it, it's a little bit different. It is a change from before, but in this instance, it actually makes a lot of sense just due to where the small piece would have been and, and annexing that in and around. So we recommend approval of this area.
Okay. That should answer the question on a tax base coming in with all that annexation. Anyone have anything they want to ask Mr. Brooks about on this annexation? Mr. Reichert?
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reichert?
Second.
Was that Mr. Lunskey? Okay, second by Mr. Lunskey. Any further discussion?
I have a question for Ryan. Why would we not just connect the city limits that are just south of Sixty-seventh on your annexation?
I'll go to this larger piece. So.
It goes down below there, but.
Yeah, I, I just, we just connected to here. This we couldn't even fill up with, we'd be annexing in stuff that we wouldn't necessarily have utilities even ready for. So, uh, we, we could certainly do it, um, bring that in. But, uh, in this case, um, we just thought bringing this into this, this portion, um, and if you can tell.
Yeah, the east and the west were already south of 62nd with the city, city limits. So.
It seems like a, yeah, it seems like a small area, but it's actually quite a bit, quite a bit of land as well. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Nope. Good question. Uh, okay, um, any further, I, I just having trouble. You got to interrupt me if you, if you want to say something. Um, seeing no hands up, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Matter check, no.
Matter check, no.
That's correct. He as well.
But Mr. Buckey as well?
Correct.
Okay, um, so it looks like, uh, motion still carries. Okay, um, item four, four.
Actually, who opposed? Was that Laddichack and Buckey?
Yes, yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, item four, four ordinance to amend zoning map gateway planned unit development, PUD, concept development plan located at 4,001 Gateway Drive.
Okay, who's got this one?
This one's me again, Steve. Actually, the rest of the meeting is, um, so we're up here on, uh, Select Inn up on Gateway Drive. This hotel has been shuttered in terms of it, it's been closed for quite some time. So, uh, Curry, I think is in, involved in the ownership on this as well. So, and they're here and I, I should have made them available to, uh, both Mike Corman and, and Curry was available on the last one as well. So, um, but, uh, this, this hotel, uh, has been closed now for a couple of years. Um, the building is there. Obviously it's, it's going to start, uh, to sink into some disrepair. So they've looked at some different options. So what they're proposing is to put this into a PUD, um, and add the use of allowing residential to be on the first floor. Uh, currently second floor, uh, residential would be allowed. And they have to work through building code to put in kitchenettes and those types of things, uh, within the rooms, but they're looking to go with these very small units within this and make it a, an actual, uh, like a apartment building with, with the very small rooms. So, um, the, the additional piece that they're asking for as part of that PUD is that only one parking space per unit be required. Uh, and then, uh, I think it was 25% of the unit, uh, for visitor parking. So with that, due to the fact that we already have the hotels there, uh, the hotel industry where it's at, uh, even, even before the spring, bringing this off of the number of units of hotels and in the interest of trying to keep this thing, uh, keep it on the property tax rolls and in the use that I thought was better than some of the others I'd heard. I thought this became a good compromise. The invest, uh, the property owners are going to be putting in some investment there as well, uh, with an architect to get those units into a, a livable residential unit as well. So there, to do those kitchenettes, those types of things that are going to be required. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. It is a little unusual. It is going the micro PUD route too, which we made available, uh, a few years ago as, as trying to be flexible.
I have a question.
Mr. Magic, go ahead.
Yes, uh, is this the old select in?
Yes, it is.
Okay, the, the other question I have is the Ironside Building, the Bobcat Building next to it is also vacated. Are there any plans for that building? Anything connected with this building or whatever?
We haven't seen anything as of yet, connecting the two.
Okay, Kurt, uh, educate me here. Uh, I noticed there's a lot of big equipment on their parking lot. Is the lot, where is the actual line? How far off of Select Inn is the line till you get to the Bobcat Building?
So Bobcat did have some, um, uh, some of their equipment on the property of the hotel. Uh, so I'll zoom in and unfortunately Frank, you can't see this, but, um, the hotel parking is, um, hopefully everybody can see that. Here's the edge of their, their, uh, concrete here. And here's where the property line is over in this region here. So Bobcat, the, the row of equipment there, uh, where the actual vehicles are, and I'm looking at a 2018 photo, but that was on the hotel property. I'm assuming they must had something worked out with the property owner, or at least the property owner was silent on it. But that, there was, there is quite a bit of green space there, uh, before you get into the ironhide, um, business.
Okay, now also just a quick question. I know this isn't quite connected to these guys, but the, uh, Bobcat business was a conditional use permit, if you remember right.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Yeah. So what would be possible to go there? The reason I'm asking this is so these guys are doing this so they know what might come next door.
So, yeah, the ironhide could, well, if they sold to, it, it's a B3 use. So anything within a B3 could go in that, in that space next to them. So this is.
And these guys are aware of that with what they're doing?
Yeah, they're, they're in a B3 as well. So they, they were aware of that. They, they are aware of the uses.
So to turn it into kitchenettes and stuff like that, that would still be allowed in the B3? Wouldn't it have to be a residential?
Well, that's the reason that we're doing the micro PUD is that you can do residential in a B3, but not on the first floor. In this case, they're asking to allow them to do residential on the first floor.
Is that a two-story building or a three?
Two-story.
Two-story, okay. I, I, something needs to be done there. I know it's, it's got a problem. So I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that those guys know something could come in next door to them like another tractor place or something, right?
Yeah, the conversation with them, they were aware of, of the building being vacant next to them. Well, it's, it's, it's quarry. So they, they're certainly available. What's in, they're aware of what's in town and what isn't and what's available for sale. I'll put it that way.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
Yep.
I guess on the next step, Ryan, we'll see some kind of a, I'd like to see some kind of a drawing, I guess. See how they're doing this. They're working on that for our next, uh, I guess for the final approval.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring that up to them to, you know, it's, it's probably going to look very similar to the layout that you see here, other than down in this area here would have visitor parking.
Right. There's just, are they going to, any kind of a unit layout or anything we can?
For the internal?
Well, yeah, just a rough to get, help us kind of get through, uh, changing the rules here to allow residential on the first floor and some of that. I would just see what it looks like.
Sure. And they're listening. So they should hear that as well to that request. So thank you.
Real simple. Okay, Mr. Reichert?
Yeah, Ryan, it looks like, uh, this hotel's using what about half the north-south distance of the lot. Um, and it looks like what we've got, we're allowing, uh, 30 units per acre. Is this, would this allow them to build another building on there or would be, they'd be just limited to the structure that's already there?
That's correct. With the, with the, with the layout that we have and then the size of the lot and the number of units in here now, um, unless they started making two, two rooms into one and going through a lot of effort. Uh, the number of units that are hotel rooms now over this acreage is what they're tapped out to be. Although when you look at the, you know, and see the density requirements, you think that, oh, could they do more? Not with this. So you're limited to the number of rooms of that hotel currently.
Okay, so they, we, we don't have to worry about them putting up another building on the south end of that lot.
Not current, not with that current setup.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Lunskey?
How many rooms are in the hotel in the current layout?
Uh, I want to say 36, which is how we got that, but, um, I think, uh, queries are here. Maybe they could answer that to make sure I've got my numbers right or, or Mr. Corman, whichever one can answer that.
Good evening, Mike Corman here. There's a, there's 31 units.
Okay, thank you.
I think I got 36 from the number of parking stalls. So I think there was five visitor and 31 for the number of rooms. So.
Right.
So Steve, if I can ask you, is this, is the intention of this to be more affordable? Rental or what is, what is the plan for that?
I'll leave that to the developer to answer. I don't know what price points they're looking at. Tim or?
I could probably, I've had some, this is Mike Corman again. Um, yeah, I think the intent is that you have a more affordable housing um, in this area. I don't know exactly what the rental rates would be, but they're looking at, at more affordable type units.
I, I do think it'll be a little bit trickier just due to those sizes that they're going to have to probably bring down the, what, what those rents would be, um, to match, but it'll be, you know, you're going to be looking at a smaller square footage for sure.
Mr. Reichert, you had your hand up?
Yeah, move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reichert?
Second.
Was that Megan, Miss Andy?
Yep.
Uh, seconded by Miss Andy. Um, any further discussion before I call for a vote? Seeing no hands up, uh, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, motion passes. Excuse me, four, five.
Ordinance to amend the zoning map, rezone lot B, block 16. Get more addition from our four multifamily district to B3 general business district located at 501 Seward Avenue.
This one's me, Mr. Ozvic again. So, uh, I'll, I'll just proceed with it. Here's Gateway Drive here. Here's Mill Road. The particular area we're looking at is 501 and 503 area. I'll, the specifically 501 would be the one being rezoned. This currently is in a residential district R4. Uh, this one's currently within the B3. This one's looking, it, it, there's a, uh, a rental unit that's located here. Recently they did a replat for this area. And now the, the owner of the property here, Nate's Electric is looking to, this rental unit's not in the best shape. So he, he's looking to maybe expand his, his business, put a, a building in roughly this area here. And tear this, uh, building down due to the condition it's in. And, uh, to do that, he would be required to rezone this into a B3, which is the zoning on this 503 and then also the areas to the south. This particular rezoning will require us to, just like all rezonings, um, to notify the neighbors and that's done on final approval. Uh, but I just wanted to point that out that, you know, there, there could be, uh, some questions because you do have some, um, single family areas that that's getting the B3 a little bit closer to, but you also have some apartment areas. So, um, I just wanted to point out that we'd be doing that, um, uh, notification on the final. Uh, this one's preliminary right now.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Brooks? Mr. Reichert? Moved by Mr. Reichert?
Uh, second by Mattercheck. I have one comment.
Uh, please, Mr. Mattercheck, go ahead. Second by Mattercheck and.
This is definitely, this is definitely preliminary and the, uh, uh, residents in the area will know about it. But basically I, I will give you a second, but I want to make sure that that's all known.
We understand.
Yep. Any other comments or questions? We've got a, a motion and a second on the floor. Seeing no other hands up, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion, uh, four, five passes. Um, item five. Ryan, you had a couple of items for us?
I, I do. And, uh, you know, I will color this and, and, uh, we can have a fairly quick conversation, but, um, what we've had is, um, requests for some temporary housing units, uh, RV type, um, uh, specifically for American Crystal Sugar when they do their fall harvest push. In the past and, and including last year, those sites had been utilizing these Grand Forks campgrounds. And in, in working with a, a local, um, express, they were looking at, uh, new sites for that because last fall was fairly wet. Um, and I think we accommodated, uh, they went to, uh, South Forks Plaza potential last year and put up some sites. And fortunately that was a very short campaign last fall, uh, fortunate that in terms of that sighting, not in terms of, uh, the egg business, obviously, uh, which had a detrimental effect on, I think, the whole community. Um, but in terms of the fact that that in combination with the wetfall we had, unfortunately, they couldn't utilize, fully utilize those campgrounds. And I think as I understand it, East Grand Forks is looking to having a potential another wetfall. I think they want to close those campgrounds again. And so there's some concern that the workers that maybe brought in for the fall harvest, they need to come up with some sites. And the thought is to maybe utilize the shopping center parking lots for that. And, uh, specifically, I think there was a request into the Columbia Mall. Um, and they've asked what the zoning would allow for that. Um, and it, it doesn't, you know, that is a concern. Uh, in terms of the look, in terms of, oh, all sorts of things that could come with that. So what we, what I wanted to do is to get your, uh, kind of feedback from that. Um, I've spoken to a few that in terms of, we don't know what the, the fall's going to look like here. Um, it could be a drier, obviously fall, hopefully it is. Um, but in addition, we may end up with, you know, a lot of local folks that are looking for those temporary jobs as well because we don't know where that, where we'll, we'll be overall. Um, in addition, um, you know, obviously the hotel industry, we just dealt with that on the previous item, you know, maybe, maybe hotels could be utilized, uh, in, in, uh, in that instead. So, um, we, staff obviously had some concerns, but I did want to get feedback from the commission, uh, perhaps fairly quick or, you know, for that you could think on that to, to let us know what your thoughts would be on that. So I know I'm springing that on you, but, um, so I wouldn't necessarily need all that tonight, but you could think on that and let us know in, uh, over the next couple of weeks. So unless anybody had immediate.
Yeah, this is Frank. I, I'd like to make a couple of comments on that.
Sure. Go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, um, uh, Crystal Sugar has, uh, uh, developed a, a bunch of employees that come up and work for the two to three months of harvest. And they've been housing them in the Sherlock Park area. It's been working out great for us. They come with their campers and, and they love it there. They can go to the movies, they can go get food, whatever, blah, blah, blah. But last year it got flooded. And that was the first time they had to basically move out of there. And, uh, uh, I just, I, I mean, I don't know. I think we should have some kind of a plan. I'll be glad to work with Ryan. And I know some people at Crystal Sugar that would be glad to work with them, um, of a, I guess of a contingency plan. If they can't house them in the, uh, uh, East Grand Forks Park or the Minnesota Park, then we, we should look at another place for them. It's a very short-term thing. Uh, they're going to be out of there by the 15th of November, probably for sure. So, uh, it's, it's not a big deal, but I think it's kind of important for those two months.
Dick, anyone else?
Yeah, I have a quick comment. Um, and assuming I understand this correctly and, and I agree that we should figure something out. I'm not a fan of using the mall parking lot. Um, I just, uh, I don't think that's appropriate in the middle of town. And if we do it for, for Crystal Sugar, then what about when the nitrogen plant comes? What about somebody else is building something and they want to start parking campers? I think, um, if it comes down to it and there isn't a place for campers, we have a whole lot of nice new hotels in our town that have been suffering with the COVID and everything else. And let's try to work something out with our businesses who who are already here before we turn a, the mall parking lot into a campground. So that's where I am on that.
Mr. Lunskey, I saw your hand too.
Yeah, I mean, is the campground south of town along the Interstate 29? Is that full at this time of year or is that, is there space available up there?
Well, as I understand it, that obviously they, they utilize, you know, the existing campgrounds first. So I don't think though. Well, as I understand it, that obviously they, they utilize, you know, the existing campgrounds first. So I don't think they'll.
How many, how many, uh, resident complaints did we get from the, uh, temporary campground in the South Forks Plaza Mall?
I'd have to check into that, but, uh, I, I do know that we, we became aware of it. So.
I think there is about fifteen units on the South Forks Mall. Uh, at that point, uh, the, uh, harvest had got so poor that, uh, there just wasn't need for a lot of employees and a lot of them have left. These people are, uh, people that come from Minnesota, Wisconsin, all over, uh, they just do it for a, a, another set of income and they have their own campers and they're gone. It's not like, uh, a lot of things. I, I agree with Miss Sandy that we need to not use the, uh, Columbia Mall parking lot or something like that, but I think there's other areas that we could strictly as a contingency plan if everything goes, uh, you know, bad like it did last year.
Yeah, we, we understand, Mr. Magic. Uh, Mr. Iker?
Yeah, I, I'm just going to echo what Megan said. I, I mean, uh, I would have a real problem with really kind of putting them anywhere in town, quite frankly. I mean, we've got probably the largest group of landowners in the eastern, uh, part of, uh, the state asking for us to use town to, uh, house their employees campers. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Um, and so, I mean, I would think that American Crystal could come up with a better idea than putting them into town. So.
Thank you for that. Anyone else have a comment?
Steve, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to work with them and, and come up with some options that may not include even coming back before you guys again. So.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I, I just, uh, my comment on it, I, I, yeah, I, I think it's, I echo Mr. Iker and Miss Andy's comments, Mr. Lunskey's, gotta be something we could do with them. I start thinking in my own head, electrical sewage, all that stuff and, and just the inspections and stuff that's going to follow with that. And so, yeah, I think, I think we can do something a little different or out of town or, or whatever. So nope, thank you for that. And then I think everybody could chew on that a little bit and get back to Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next.
So the next item, uh, let me pull up some, I'm just going to share a, a one site. So what we've been working on with the, um, uh, with city council, we've been providing some information on, um, apologize, let me pull up the info here. We've been looking at some rural developments. Share out my screen here. Let me try this again. Well, let me go with this. For some reason, my screen's freezing up, but, um, we have, uh, an area that's looking to, um, uh, we, we showed you some new developments that we're looking at over here. We showed you that in the spring. Another one over in this area here, uh, here's South Washington and sixty-second. So we're definitely looking to, to jump sixty-second here soon. Uh, there's a lift station temporary one being looked at or a form of a, a lift station being looked at in here. And now we have a, even an area, uh, on the west side of Washington, a developer looking in that area. And we'll probably have some stuff coming before you assume. Uh, but uh, another, uh, thing that's being looked at that, that's probably new to most of you and, and we've gotten some feedback from city council as well. There is a, a look of a rural development. Somebody's looking to do, um, smaller one-acre style development where they would, uh, they would connect along South, South Washington sanitary sewer into the city system. Um, but this would allow them to go with a little bit denser development, but in the rural area. Um, so, um, and when I say denser development, um, specifically for, for Andrew, who I know is, is asked about densities already tonight. The, the denser development in the rural area would be acre-sized lots or, or a little bit more. So, uh, it's dense in a, in a rural, um, context, not, not an urban context. Um, and then for everybody's, uh, understanding, our flood protection system stops at Merrifield Road here and then curls up Belmont Road. So, uh, this would be an area that would be outside of that. There is a concern from a staff level that obviously, and it was even in the paper today, uh, I've, I've expressed the desire to keep farmland. That is, uh, this is some of the best in the world. Uh, keep that, uh, as farmland as, as long as possible. And we had many of those discussions, uh, with the planning commission at the time, uh, in terms of, of the density that we allow for development overall and trying to keep the city from being, um, expanding too much, too quickly and, uh, too widely. Now, a lot of the new developments are much smaller. Uh, we're not seeing the large lots that we used to. Um, but it, it is a concern, um, as you start to jump Merrifield Road, wouldn't be anything that would ever be annexed, but they are looking to try to send, uh, that sanitary, uh, up north. So I, I just wanted to introduce that to you. Uh, it's been introduced to city council. I wouldn't say the feedback was, um, great from them in terms of whether or not that would be done, uh, but they didn't make any final decision on that. But, uh, since it was introduced to them, it was a development thing. I thought it was important also to include planning commission. Uh, no request is being made of you at this time. But I did want to share that with you all, just so you guys were aware of, of some of the things that were being shared everywhere else. So, um, welcome to give me feedback. Doesn't need to be tonight and can be in the future. So I'll keep.
Thanks for, thanks for keeping us, uh, kind of in front of it, Ryan. I appreciate that.
You bet.
Anyone have any comments? I guess just Mr. Iker?
Yeah, two things. One, um, I had brought up quite a while back now about, uh, looking at the code to allow, uh, some more, uh, uh, ideas on developing the salt, salt flats, uh, to the west of town. Um, so that we could have, you know, not requiring green space, uh, in areas where it wouldn't grow, uh, things like that. Um, I, I think that we should be looking at that and looking at ways to promote growth west. Also, I can say that I really like the idea of small lots because, and I'll talk to you more about this, Ryan, when the meeting's over, because I think it's a longer discussion, but I, I'm hearing these horror stories of what happens when we start annexing these large lots and, and what it does, uh, property tax-wise, that these people get hit with huge specials and huge property taxes. So I think, uh, we may want to look at some of our extra, extraterritorial jurisdiction zoning, uh, and some of that stuff out there that we might want to encourage smaller lots in areas that we're going to be annexed into the city relatively quickly. Um, so like I said, I, I just want to put that out to the public, but I also, um, I'll sit down and talk with you, Ryan, um, more about that because I think, uh, we, we've just been kind of ignoring, uh, what the trend is. Uh, and maybe part of that is because our twenty forty-five plan doesn't even have us down there yet. So, um, so we'll talk later, but thank you.
Just a quick note, that'll land use plans coming up. So a lot of that'll be incorporated in that as well, but I'd love to have the discussion at a time. So.
I, I have a comment, Frank.
Okay, Mr. Magic.
Yeah, yeah. Brian, a- a- apparently going to go to smaller lots if they can develop a, uh, uh, a system for the sewage, then we would not need a two and a half acre lot.
Well, that's, that's what they're looking at. And, and you know, this is part of a larger study. So the, the city is working with the rural water and, and taking a look at how this could potentially work. Um, so we haven't said absolutely not, but we're trying to stay open-minded on, on how that could potentially work.
Well, a lot, lot of these larger lots are two and a half acres because they need a septic system, right?
That's correct. Yes.
Yeah. So if you could eliminate that, then you could have a smaller lot.
Yeah, that's, that's the thought behind it. Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Frank. Mr. Madascheck, sorry. I think we're all getting tired. Okay. Um, thanks for that, Ryan. Do appreciate the heads up.
Thank you.
Any other business from, uh, planning department?
Nothing.
Hi, Andrea, Stephanie. Okay. Um, with that, can I get a motion, Mr. Iker?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
Move that second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Have a great night, everybody, and a better weekend.
See you. Thanks.